Good evening. I would like to call to order the November 18th, 2015 school committee meeting. The time now is 7:05 PM. The November 18th, 2015 school committee meeting will be televised and recorded. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would ask if anyone is recording tonight's meeting to please identify themselves. Thank you, Mr. Brendan Foley from the town crier, and Cassidy from the Lowell Sun. Thank you for coming this evening. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone for a moment of silence. We had our dear friend of ours to the Tewksbury Community, Daisy Cannell, pass away most recently. She has two children here in the Tewksbury Public Schools. She has two sons, one a freshman here at Tewksmore High School and one a junior. Our thoughts and prayers with her and her family at this time. Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask our honored guests to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Clerk) Hallelujah. 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 (Clerk) Hallelujah.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. O'Connor this evening for our recognition.
Thank you. We have our girls' varsity volleyball team here this evening, and I would like to call members of the team to please come up. Kathryn Butler, Delaney Chisholm, Adriana Favreau, Kareema Zahari, Amanda Rickby, Nicole Pettigridge, Nora Butler, Kristina Neues, Molly Robinson, Kathryn McVeigh, Kendall Peal, and Isabella Simone. In addition to having our team here, we also have head coach Jim Ray. Jim, would you come on up, please? Assistant coach Emily York and Caitlin Stokes. Trainer Jim Walker and Jen Boyd, and manager Sophia Alfano. So we are here tonight to recognize this team, not just for their accomplishments on the volleyball court and in the classroom, but something happened that touched me, and I think when I share this with you, you also will be touched. We received a letter from a parent of a North Andover player who during a match was injured. I want to read the, it's a very brief letter. It says, "I am the mom of the North Andover player who was injured at the end of the game last Friday. I wanted to get in touch with you for a couple of reasons. Number one, to let you know that after a thorough check out at both Lawrence General and Children's Hospital, my daughter is home and recuperating. She has a nasty neck back sprain and concussion, but otherwise has checked out okay. I wanted to let you know that because seeing an ambulance taking a player away may have been upsetting to some of the girls on both teams. But most of all, I wanted to tell you that your team, players and families, were absolutely wonderful. They were very respectful throughout, and we received some kind wishes from players on the way out. In addition, one of the team mothers made an extremely generous and thoughtful gesture in donating a fleece blanket that she had won in a raffle to my daughter. I would like to pass along how much that meant, particularly since we wound up leaving Boston at 5:00 AM Saturday morning when it was very chilly and my daughter was just in her volleyball uniform. The blanket was a huge comfort for the trip home. Finally, I'd like to personally thank you as the coach for setting an example of leadership and good sportsmanship. It was a pleasure seeing how you relate to your team members and encourage their play in such a positive manner. Best of luck in the remainder of the season." And this was from Judy Reich. This went to the coach. She copied me on it, and I just wanted to make everyone aware of just how amazing their efforts were during this time. Also here tonight, I think, is Christina and Michael Svensson. Are they the parents? Are they here tonight?
Tell them to come on.
Are they here? If you want to come on up with them.
Because they need it.
And everybody else? These are the mom and daughter that donated the blanket to the player on their way out.[311.12][311.12](Applause). Mr. Dick is going to come over and read a proclamation that we've prepared for you.
(Inaudible)
That's right. It's okay.
You know, we do a lot of these presentations, and it's always great to see a lot of kids come before us. We seem to continue to lead not only athletically in the area of Merrick Valley, but also with class and respect. Hats off to the coaches and all that stuff. This is a special time. So this is a resolution of recognition to the whole team and the coaches. Tewksbury Memorial High School Girls Volleyball Team, Kathryn Butler, Nora Butler, Delaney Chisholm, Adriana Favreau, Kathryn McVeigh, Kristina Neues, Kendall Peala, Nicole Pettigridge, Amanda Rickby, Molly Robinson, Isabella Simone, Kareema Zahari, Rises on the Court and Off the Court. And whereas the volleyball team received the Merrick Valley Conference Team Sportsmanship Award, and whereas the volleyball team, Tewksbury Volleyball Team, are the Merrick Valley Conference NBC Two League Champs, and whereas team captain Nicole Pettigridge was named NBC Two Player of the Year, and whereas Kristina Neues received the Bill Browder Sportsmanship Award, and whereas team captain Nora Butler, his first team All-Conference. And Delaney Chisholm, Kendall Peala, and Molly Robinson were also named as League All-Stars. And head coach James Ray was named NBC Two Coach of the Year. Whereas the girls' varsity volleyball team, state tournament quarterfinalists, it's a special thing. So whereas the team displayed respect and kindness towards an opposing team as athletic trainer, Jen Boyd handled a difficult injury of a North Andover volleyball player during the October 16, 2015 game. Whereas the girls' varsity volleyball team, coach Jim Ray sits and coaches Emily York and Caitlin Stokes, manager Sophia Alfano, athletic trainers James Walker and Jen Boyd brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm, and honor to themselves, to their parents and families, to the school, and to the town of Tewksbury. So now, therefore, it be resolved that the Tewksbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the outstanding achievements and kindness of the 2015 Tewksbury Memorial High School Girls Varsity Volleyball Team, their coaches, assistants, manager, and athletic trainers. Congratulations.[478.62][478.62](Applause). Congratulations, everybody. We'll do like, we'll do quick. Good job. All those smiles, hey, it's almost that time of year, right? Turkey Day. So congratulations, Dr. O'Connor.
It's in the Svenssons. I just wanted to say, we wanted to replace the blanket, but I wasn't about to go out blanket shopping, so we have something for each of you that hopefully you'll be able to keep for a while and use. We really appreciate, again, that very generous act. You know, the team learned from what you did, and hopefully we've all learned from what you did as well. So thank you for coming this evening. Parents, if you wanted to take pictures now at the time, while they're all smiling. And after that, as I said, you can exit out the door. We're going to continue with our meeting.
There's cookies.
There's cookies out there. That's right.
There's cookies out there. We saw them out there. Already planted.
And congratulations on the wonderful season. We all were talking about it, how far you went, and I actually had the pleasure of seeing you in the finals. And for someone that doesn't know anything about volleyball, what a pleasure it was to watch you play in five games, and what a team you were, and you played with all heart. And I liked the camaraderie, and how everybody really cheered for everybody. You guys were a pleasure to watch. And as Dr. O'Connor and Mr. Dick said, most importantly, it's how you conducted yourself off the field that we're most proud of. And this is a perfect example of Tewksbury Public Schools, students and families at their best. So thank you so much for, you know, leading such a great example here in Tewksbury. Thank you.[566.82][566.82](Applause).
Thank you. It's very quick. Thank you very much. The recognition.
Thank you. You did a wonderful job.
Good job. Congratulations. Good job. Thank you. Next day, we'll do another.
I thought it was on it when they won three games. They haven't won a game like in five years.
This guy's done a great job.
Yeah, he has.
Great job.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, I thought so. Because I thought she was on it.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to our student representative, Mr. Petrie, to present the high school report.
Thank you very much. So the National Honor Society is still selling Thanksgiving Day Game T-shirts for $15 each. Members recently took part in Make a Difference Day as one of the many community service projects the organization is planning throughout the year. The tutoring program is also up and running, and students are asked to see Ms. Puma if they have any questions. The newly formed TMHS Book Buddies Club visited the North Street Elementary School on November 4th and earlier this afternoon to read to third grade students. This club's mission is to promote literacy and service within the Tewksbury Public School System. The class of 2016 handed out senior T-shirts last week. Seniors who have not ordered one but are interested in ordering one should see a class council representative for information. Student Council is running their annual food drive through the rest of this week, and the winner will be announced at the pep rally on Wednesday, November 25th. Today, our delegates participated in the annual Northeastern Massachusetts Association of Student Council's Fall Conference, in which our very own president, Connor Pennell, and myself helped out to organize the conference and give a workshop on stepping out of your comfort zone. And the DECA Club is ready for their annual fashion show to premiere tomorrow at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. All are invited to attend, and all proceeds will go to the Megan McCarthy Fund.
Thank you, Mr. Petrie.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
You as well.
At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. O'Connor for our presentations this evening.
Vivian, thank you. We have two presentations. Our first is for elementary principals, talking about literacy. I'm going to let Mrs. Regan just do a quick introduction, and welcome Principal Garish and Winstone, and Mr. Kastangway in the back.
And Mrs. Fuller.
Well, Mrs. Fuller's there.
She's with us. Can't get without her.
Thank you. So we invited our K-4 principals and U.S. Westones to come and present to you really a model practice that we're asking of all of our educators, is when we have the data, what do we do with it? And what does the data show us, and how can we put an action plan in place to best meet the student achievement goals that we've set? So I'm not going to share any of the results. I think that's
Don't give away the ending.
... because, I mean, Principal Garish has already presented this report to the K-4 principal that I recently asked, and we were very impressed with what we did. And we'll go to the booth.
Thanks, Mrs. Regan. Thanks, Madam Chairman, members of the committee. We're so happy to be with you tonight, to be able to share a little bit of what we've learned, because we're new. And so when we come into a building, I think I finally have learned everyone's name in the building, and not all of the students yet, but at least if I have the staff down and I get payroll in on time, I figure I'm in good shape. But what we're trying to look to be good instructional and academic leaders, both Felicia and I come from practices where we look at data. We look at data-driven instruction and decision-making, and it's how we best get our first glimpse of where students are and where teachers might be. And it's, I don't know, it's what we, so when we came to Tewksbury, what we did was we started looking at literacy data. And so one of the things, particularly as a former literacy specialist, Felicia should give you a little bit of background about what it looks like for reading in early elementary, early and midelementary. Then we'll talk a little bit about the data that we saw, some implications that we took away from it, and then some next places where we're hoping to do our work next.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for having us. We're excited to share this information with you tonight. So again, as Teri said, I'm here to give you a little bit of background on reading at the K to 4 level. And basically, in grades K to 2, we're really asking, we're really hoping students are learning to read. So we're taking a look at phonemic awareness, phonics, and fluency skills at that age level. As a transition to grades 3 and up, we make that jump from learning to read to reading to learn. So now students are accessing content through the curriculum with their fluency skills. At this age level, we're really focusing on building a really strong foundation in phonics and fluency that is going to allow students to gain meaning from text as they move up through the elementary and secondary schools. So as Teri mentioned, we're the new ones, and we've done a lot of research to find out what the past and current reading practices here in the district. We know that we have a research-based core reading instruction curriculum called Storytown that has built-in supports for every classroom teacher. And at each school, we also have a reading specialist and a literacy aide, in addition to the special educators that are assigned to each grade level. We've used lots of data in the district to track student growth, one of them being the MCAS. We certainly look at the third grade MCAS and the fourth grade MCAS as K to 2 principals to try to find out those areas that we need to strengthen as students move up to those standardized testing grades. Another assessment that we use is called the DIBELS. It's a dynamic indicator of basic early literacy skills. And that assesses the foundational reading skills, basically how kids break apart and put sounds together, learning how to read. We also have the RIGBY test, which measures comprehension on a grade-level continuum, so it helps us to know if kids are understanding text as they move through the grades. And then we also have our Storytown unit tests and benchmarks as well.
So as somebody who has worked at both the elementary and secondary level, one of the things that I know that from a district point of view, I want to look at summative assessments, and I want to look at MCAS. So what we did was, we got the four elementary principals together, Mrs. Fuller, and we started looking at data, and we pulled, I pulled the reading and the English Language Arts MCAS data for the past three years for grades 3 through 6. And we wanted to take a look, and she had lots and lots of numbers, and I promise not to bore you with going through them, because you've seen them over each year as you've seen the results. And as a whole, our kids do pretty well. And we have, so the items in green are students who have received, who perform at or above the grade-level benchmark or are proficient in terms of the state, in terms of the old MCAS. On the next slide, I actually just wanted to focus a tiny bit on those students who showed as needs improvement or in warning. And what I have a tendency is, I take those percentages and I translate to numbers of kids, and I'm going, all right, so we've got, most of our kids are getting it. What about our kids who aren't? And why aren't they? And what does it look like? And if this is, if we've got this number of kids that are having issues and aren't performing at a high level yet, what can we do in the K to 2 and then carry that through 3, grades 3, 4, and into grade 5 so that we can build up that solid foundation? And so we want to know, what are those indicators, and what does it mean for us?
So the MCAS obviously is a summative assessment. It happens at the end of the school year, and it's a way to reflect back on the practices. But we also need to take a look at formative assessments, and those are assessments that we give throughout the year to really drive our instruction. We give it, and then we go back and change the instruction in our classroom. So DIBELS is a great example of a formative assessment, and it happens three times a year. I won't go through each of the ones, but basically it takes a look at students' ability to complete a task in a one-minute time period, which shows how fluent they are in that task. So you have a letter naming portion, which has students look at a series of letters and identify them as quickly as they can. First sound fluency, giving students a word and asking them to tell you the first sound they hear in it. Phoning segmentation is breaking apart the words and the sounds. Nonsense word fluency is giving students a three-letter word with a short vowel sound in the middle and asking them to either tell you the individual sounds or read them as a whole word. And then we move into putting all the sounds together and reading fluently. We also have RIGBY, which I mentioned before, is understanding text on a grade-level continuum in Storytown. So that's something that we use for all students in the district. And as you see on the next slide, as we partnered with WestEd, which is the company that's come in to help us with our new inclusion model, we really wanted to create a system of formative assessments to track all student growth. So as you can see on the graph, we have K to 4 with the assessment on the left, and it shows you, if we take a look at the first one, DIBELS Next Benchmark. If you look on the first line, you can see that it happens three times a year. Who assesses? For that one, it's the classroom teacher. Who inputs the data is the reading teacher, the classroom instructional aide, or the academic support aide. And then we have, it's completed by October 1st, February 1st, and June. And we also, as a group of principals, got together and signed on to the DIBELS Data Warehouse. And that is a tracking system that we input all of our student data, which runs some really great reports, not only for us to look at, but for the individual classroom teachers as well.
And one of the things, as we use that DIBELS data system, we get to look at measures in time that informs our current instruction, but it also gives us measures over time so we can develop some longitudinal data. So we start from kindergarten, grade 1, then when they go to the North Street and Trahan, and then eventually to the Ryan School, we can follow that information all the way along. So one of the things I wanted to show you a little bit about, I put doing data up there, but when we looked at the doing in Heathbrook, we found that we were within a point of each other on everything. So we're, so the north side of town, south side of town is going right around the same way. If you look at the graph on the left-hand side, you'll see the top three represent students at kindergarten, first, and second grade level at a screening, at a benchmark screen that was done during the first month of school. And the idea is, in kindergarten, we look at first sound fluency. If they, if we say, here's a bat, what's the, what is the sound? And they go, buck, 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 bat. First grade, we look at the nonsense word fluency, because that seems to be the indicator of progress. And in second grade, the oral reading fluency, being able to put more words together between sounding them out and sight words. And we look pretty darn good up there. We've got lots of green, and that kind of correlates to our MCAS. But you'll look, if you look over, I mean, if at the top and you see former goals, on the right-hand side, the recommended goals. Our expectations for student learning have changed over the past decade and a half. Since March of 2011, Massachusetts adopted new curriculum frameworks. They are, they have upped the ante for all of us. And so it says, "In order for a student to be ready, to be college-ready, there needs to be, there needs to be a progression of learning." And when we turn around and break that down, class by class and grade by grade, and the folks at University of Oregon have said, all right, now in kindergarten, first, and second grade, if the score, this is the exact same raw score, but on the right, you'll find that far fewer of our students are performing at the current expectation for grade level, and that we've got far more students in the red or warning area saying, oh my gosh, we really need to get some, get some interventions, and these kids need some additional work. What does that mean for our instruction? So the expectations are going up. So what are our takeaways? So one of the things that we look at, we know as teachers of literacy, and every elementary teacher is a teacher of reading, whether you're teaching mathematics, or science, or it's all about how do you put together to create meaning. But phonics decoding and fluency skills have to be together. Before you can start putting words together to try to create ideas and to form pictures in your head, you have to be able to put those sounds together. The other thing that it needs to be is, we need to have the same type of instruction from grade to grade, from classroom to classroom. If, for example, in kindergarten, we teach the short letter A, the short A sound by saying, let's look at the little hat over the A. And then in, and so we always look, we're always looking for the little hat, and the teacher always uses the little hat. If in first grade, they say, we're going to use bat. A is for apple, A, A, A. And the kids are going, where's the little hat? I don't know. Perfectly acceptable, might even be research-based. And then in second grade, they might turn around and say, you know, there might be a third wave. So one of the advantages of having a common core resource is that you have a consistent expectation and a consistent way to teach those sounds. What happens with the system that we have, which is currently 13 years old, the program, is that over the course of years, there have been a modification here, a slight change here, we're going to try this with this group, we're going to try another group. We have four or five other supplementary programs that are sometimes supplementing, sometimes supplanting. So one of the things that we think that might even be happening, and we're not really sure yet, because once again, only three months in, we think that we're not seeing a consistent application of a consistent sound spelling phonics program. And so we're wondering if there may be, and as we look, start to do some anecdotal evidence, that there may be some over-identification of some students with learning disabilities when in fact there may be reading gaps. And if they had the same situation, we want to take a look at reading instruction, and if we beef that up, might some of that, some of those problems go away? So in order to do that, then we have to say, wow. So we have the data, we look at the data. In general, where are we going? What do we have to do now? What do we think the picture is of where our instruction is? You know, we've got a lot of really smart folks working very hard, but we seem to be not exactly on the same page. So we said, you're going to be on the same page. School committee, in its time, approved a core resource, which in this is Storytown, that has a, that has a research-based phonics program that's in it. It has a lot of the comprehension passages are, quite frankly, don't have the level of text complexity that is required of them. But the phonics is fine. And we're hoping that as we go forward, that we might be able to form a committee to take a look and see what kind of reading resources might be appropriate going forward to maybe update, make sure our kids have up-to-date materials. We also know, so first, everybody's going to teach the same thing. Everybody's going to do the same scope and sequence as Storytown. The next thing is, is that we have to make sure that every elementary child gets a dedicated 30 to 45 minutes of direct targeted phonics instruction every day. And those who need more, who are not working at grade level, need to have twice that. And we have, and so what we've had to do, and we've talked about, is rebuilding, is changing our schedules to make sure that students have access to those programs. And then, then our job comes in.
So as principals, we decided that in order to support this change, we're going to really focus our observations during ELA time and be really looking at that ELA block to make sure that we have the dedicated phonics instruction, we have whole group instruction using our Storytown curriculum, and that we also have, you know, differentiated instruction in small groups as well. So we'll be going in over the next couple of months and doing that. We also have become very purposeful in how we intervene and how we group students. Thanks to the data that we've looked at with DIBELS and the way it's been, you know, reported in DIBELS Data Warehouse, we've been able to take a look at how we put kids together. So we have Tier 1. So Tier 1, just so you know, is your core instruction in the classroom. Every student is receiving Tier 1 instruction, given by the classroom teacher, by the special education teacher, and the reading teacher that may be in there. In Tier 2, we're providing strategic support for students. And this can happen inside the classroom or out. It can happen during the core instruction or during MTSS block. If you're not familiar with MTSS, it stands for Massachusetts Tiered System of Support, formerly known as RTI. And that's a block that we have all dedicated in our school, a 30 to 40-minute block that's dedicated to practicing the skills we're learning in literacy. Everybody gets what they need during that time. So the students who are thriving are getting challenge materials, and the students who may be struggling are getting the support they need. And in Tier 3, that's the intensive support. So those are typically the kids you saw in the red on the DIBELS. They're getting support out of the classroom in addition to their core reading. So they have their core time with their teacher, and then this is in addition to. And that's a block that we have all dedicated in our school, a 30 to 40-minute block that's dedicated to practicing the skills we're learning in literacy. Everybody gets what they need during that time. So the students who are thriving are getting challenge materials and the students who may be struggling are getting the support they need. And in Tier Three, that's the intensive support. So those are typically the kids you saw in the red on the DIBELS. They're getting support out of the classroom in addition to their core reading. So they have their core time with their teacher and then this is in addition to.
So how do we, how do we help our teachers make this happen? How do we take, how do we make sure that they have the inventory of the materials that they need? There are plenty of materials in the building. And so how do we find a way to make sure that we're following? So led by the K-2 reading specialists, they're developing a concordance. And very simply, it's taking the list of all the Storytowns from kindergarten through grade five and a list, there are 40 weeks of school. Week one, you learn that, like in kindergarten, you learn the letter M, then the letter R, then the letter T. And in grade one, you learn a short A, then a short I, then a short O. And you work that down. So you would have that for each grade. But folks are using other materials. There are Foundations, which is a Wilsons-based program. There's One Way. Some folks have been using Lips, which is an intensive intervention program. There are all kinds of different ways. So what they're trying to do is, as we go down the list, say for the letter M, in Storytown, in kindergarten, it's right here, in One Way, it might be lesson 11, and pages 11 through 13, so the teacher can also go there. For One Way, it might be, and we're trying to make sure that all of these resources come together so that we can have our teachers and have our kids go through the same, the same cycle and the same list of, that by the end of kindergarten, by the end of first grade, every child will receive the same level of instruction in the same order with the same expectation. And then the other thing that we, that we're working with the superintendent's office and with Mrs. Regan's office is, we've really asked, we've talked about, what do we need to do at this point? What materials work? What materials don't work? What practices work? Which ones don't work? We need, we really feel very strongly that we want to get together to form an elementary literacy committee or PLC, to be able to look at, let's continue to look at the data. Let's look at the practices that we've put into play and what kind of, what kind of benefits our children are seeing. Let's take a look at the resources that we have. Let's look at a scope and sequence that's standards-based and a year-long plan. And then are the resources that we have sufficient to reach those standards or do we need to look at something else and to look at new literacy? And then the other thing that we'd like to do, the last thing, is to develop, we've got some diagnostic tests, you know, the Rigby and the DIBELS and everything. We'd like to develop some formative assessments going through once a quarter for every grade that measures not only phonics but comprehension and that are more aligned to MCAS, MCAS 2.0, whatever the summative assessments are, so that they're in, so that the modeling, so that we're asking questions of students that reach the standards in the same way that students all across the nation are being asked. So whether they come from Tuxbury or whether they come from Boston or from Lowell or from Wellesley, that every child in every grade will have the same chance for success. And then we move from that, that good system to a really great Level One district. That's what we've got. So we've got enough to do for a few more weeks. And wanted to know if you had any questions of us or anything that we can do to help get more information for you, if there's anything we can do to support.
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Francis.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. It was really, it was really good. And the thing that I like most about it is, a lot of times we get data, and data's only data. It's what are you gonna do with the data? And I think that the plan that you have in place, you're trying to analyze it and trying to make improvements, I think is tremendous. And I also really enjoy to hear about the consistency from, you know, school to school, class to class, so that every student is being taught the exact same way. Because as you said, as you move forward, it becomes more important as you go up the chain. So I think it's tremendous work and tremendous job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Mrs. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for your presentation. I've always been a big fan of the DIBELS test and I'm really excited to see it, how the district has, we've been using it for a long time, but it's wonderful to see what you're doing with that data. I wanted to know, when you're talking about assessments and formative assessments, is the MCAS enough for a summative assessment? Are we looking at the grade? Are we looking at the GORT? Or is that something that happens at, when we're looking, we're doing assessments on students for special education?
I think that, I wouldn't presume to have a definitive answer. I'd want to have, to be able to talk with all the colleagues to get points of view from different grade levels. But I think that the grade is a decent test, the DRA is a good test, SRI with the reading inventory. There are a number of things to do as we work toward that summative end of the year. Because when, if we look only at that end-of-the-year data, then we say, alright, well, but that's the whole year, but what can we do from week to week, from month to month? And I think that, I think we take a look at some of the materials and the resources that you've described and some others to say, what do we want to know and what can we do to find an instrument that will help us measure that?
Yes. Okay. And then my other question is, what are you doing to drive multisensory instruction with your staff?
We were just, as a matter of fact, we were just talking about that. And I was in a, the idea of being able for students to be able to see, to be able to hear, to be able to, to be able to experience the information. So many times, if we don't, if students are having trouble with the squiggles on a page, they're just going to have more trouble with squiggles on a page. So we somehow have to make it real by starting with sound spelling cards, with tracing letters, with hearing letters, with using, with using computer programs like StarFuzz, so that they can hear it, they can see it, they can have pictures, they can have 3D images, they can, and actually, what a lot of, a lot of the ELL, a lot of vocabulary instruction that are good for our English language learners, is actually good first knowledge, first language acquisition and some of those skills. And I think that we maybe could do a better job with that because I can't, I would like to be able to put systems in place so that we can say, okay, in first grade, we do this, in second grade, we do this. And we do so consistently so that we have, all of our teachers have that same toolbox of skills. And I'm not sure that we all have the same set of skills. And so I would like to look into that a little bit more because you're absolutely right. And also using UDL, you know, the Uniform Design for Learning, so that we can make sure that however our students learn, we have a way, we know our content so well that we can make sure that we can deliver it in a way that they can acquire.
Outstanding. Well, I look forward to hearing more about the results from your PLC.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment on that too? About the multisensory piece? That's also an easier piece to include in our instruction when the phonics is directly related to the stories and the activities that the students are reading. And that's one of the big pieces that we glean from all of this data, is that phonics can't be in isolation, but the connection to the sounds need to be relevant to the student. And that means relevant to the story they're reading, the words and their vocabulary, which should also be the spelling words. All of that is what goes into a research-based program. Our somewhat dissension from using all those pieces as separated things, it makes it more difficult to create a very comprehensive experience for all students. And that's really a big piece of this, is bringing it all together with what we have and then identifying is the better way that we can use.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Regan. Mr. Cutlass?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. I thought it was tremendous for me to learn this. And I have a couple of questions though. On that graph where you had the DIBELS Next with the former goals and then the DIBELS Next with the recommended goals, can you explain to me that? Because it's such a dramatic difference. It's, was it two different tests or a variation?
Same test.
Same test.
Same exact test, except the cut points were higher. So if we were asking students to read, let's say, 24 words in a minute on the former, now we may be asking them to read 43 words in a minute.
Okay. And why did you escalate it? Is that what's done in other?
The reason that we escalated it is that we didn't choose them. The folks on, at the University of Oregon and the folks that nationally normed this test have made the decision to change it over the whole country, not just, not just us.
Okay, no, that's good. I mean, so they said we should be going forward, learning much more at this level with this firm.
Exactly right. It raises the expectations.
Right.
And I believe the common core is driving this.
So that's driving that too. So we have to do that. So that's excellent. And I think, and you're working across the whole first K through six to do it. I mean, not to raise an issue, but is common planning time involved in this in any way? I mean, is that a place?
Yeah, you can't do it without it.
Alright, so you have to have that in order to do this, right?
To have those conversations, you know, and we have it with, you know, with, we have it, some with short amounts of time, some with larger amounts of time. But the idea of continuing the way that we focus, when we look at plan books, we say, you know what, for the next three weeks, for the next three or four weeks, we're going to come in during your phonics instruction block. And we want to, and we want to get the takeaways. And so that feeds us to, so we, alright, what kind of professional development do we need to do during the next faculty meeting? What kind of supports do we need to put into place?
I think that's spectacular. Thank you very much. I think it was great.
And the data warehouse has really made it accessible for teachers to run different reports and to really see, to track their student growth. So that's become much more part, I think, of the discussions.
I agree with you. I like that, because at the beginning, the principals and our reading specialists were the only ones that had access. But we, our teachers are now, just not, not the majority yet, but a few are saying, can I, can I get to my kid's data? So we give them access and so they have the 18 or the 21 or the 23 kids, and then they can put a name and a face with every single one of those children. And then they can be able to move, these four kids need help here, these six kids need help here. And that's putting that information, as you said, not just looking at the data, but finding ways to actually use it in instruction.
So some of them are doing it, but we need all of them to do it, correct?
We've only been here three months, Mr. Cutlass. We have something to do for the other half of the year.
That's good. Good. Thank you very much.
A key piece of our PD is Kevin McCardle, retired principal, and Jerry Cummings have been planning afternoon trainings on teasing out what does the red really mean? Because remember, a student may have scored in the red because of a significant oral reading fluency concern, or another student may be in letter naming. So not all students need the same remediation. You know, letter just recognition is an issue. Well, that's a significant difference in being able to read our lives. So I think that that's a key piece in helping our teachers, is getting hungry for the data and then what does it mean and how do I help those kids? I think that the more that they use it, the more that they're gonna want it.
That's good. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cutlass.
It was a pleasure. Thank you for having us.
I just have one question that hasn't been mentioned, and that was regarding the formative assessments, are we giving that, those results immediately to the families?
Thank you.
And to the, you know, of the students so that they know exactly where they stand? I mean, this is great and data-driven decision-making is wonderful, we all know it's a partnership, but are the families getting these results like real time? You know, if we do a test, they know in October, okay, my child needs, you know, this, this...
I don't know that we're doing that consistency, Madam Chairman. I think that one of the things is, as we develop those formatives, because right now we just have some diagnostic pieces. And so as we develop those formatives, I think those are the things through the Aspen Security Portal and through the things that we absolutely share that information. Because how, if we really want families and schools to be partnerships, then we both have to have the same pieces of information.
Good, thank you. I thought your presentation this evening was excellent. I liked the enthusiasm and you bringing new knowledge base to the district and looking at things through a different lens. I think that's always great. Change is always a wonderful opportunity for, I think, our schools. So I thank you for looking at this data and I look forward to seeing results and seeing some of the things that come out of your PLCs in the future. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Madam Chair.
Our second presentation, and thank you both for coming this evening. Matthew, thank you. Jan, appreciate it. Our second presentation is by Assistant Superintendent Regan regarding the Park and MCAS analysis. You have data in front of you, a series of charts, graphs that we put together. Mrs. Regan's presentation is going to be brief in that we told you that we would be providing you with preliminary data at this meeting. Not that I'm putting her on the spot to be brief. That was not the, the purpose of that comment, was to let you know that we have not delved deeply into the analysis of this data. We still don't have the individual student data. Other pieces that will be coming to us that I think, when we've had a chance to analyze it, we'll do a much more detailed presentation. And with that, Mrs. Regan, we'll give you sort of a bird's eye view of how we did last year.
So the cover sheet, the, if you will, is more a comparison of this year's Park data and last year's MCAS data. And not comparing every point, but you know, if we look at the red column, it's the district. If we look at the blue column, it's the state scores. And I think it's important for people to know that in the past on MCAS, or currently still on MCAS, proficient or advanced is acceptable to show proficiency at grade level standards. With Park, a level four or a five is, shows mastery, meeting and math, exceeding the grade level standards. So what we're looking at here is a percentage of our students. This is district scores only. We don't have any specific student scores yet. So it's hard to really analyze item analysis and specific students and how they perform. But really, what I can tell you is that the backup data that I put in, and I put that in so you can see where I got the numbers from, I just want to draw your attention to the colored bars. You know, it's pretty obvious that green and dark green and light green show that meeting and exceeding. But when this, the student data is released, these reports are very interactive. And meaning, we can just click on the bar and start to drill down as to how many students were in this and what were the issues, what were the items that caused issues. So I'm really impressed with the level of reporting that's coming out from the new next-generation testing. So back to that cover page, I just want to highlight some strengths. I'm very happy to say that we outperformed the state on the Park exam in all grade levels, both math and ELA, except for in one grade level, and that was fifth grade math. I'm going to Park, pun intended, the grade nine, 11 Park test, because I think what the whole state really gleaned is that our students won, I'm gonna make some predictions. The technology piece was difficult at Tuxbury High School. Two, students were very well aware that this did not count. And we know that when high school students were seen in the past, take a test that doesn't really come, the serious sense of purpose is less than desirable, I shall say. But even having said that, you can see that our results are not that different from the state. But I'm very, very proud to say that our students and staff just did a phenomenal job on this next-generation state assessment. It was our first go at this out of the gate. And you can see, as I said, we clearly were, rose above the state scores more than we had even in the past on MCAS. So I will tell you that when you look at the state data, the state doesn't show the same kind of growth in results from MCAS to Park as Tuxbury did. So I'm very proud to tell you that. Fairly equivalent rate of our students that performed well on the 2014 MCAS, being in position and advanced, also performed well on the Park at a four and five. Fourth grade results were remarkable. This is actually reflective of the state as well. It was the highest ranking score on the Park exam across the state. Now, we know that the fourth grade MCAS exam has typically been our most rigorous exam historically. So I really do think, my prediction would just say, that we historically addressed that level of rigor in our instruction. I think it showed in our students' performance on the test. Our student growth percentile in the 2015 Park exam was approximately equal to, again, or above our student growth percentile from the 2014 MCAS. And you can see that I marked the particular areas of my concern in fifth grade in red. I will say that our 2015 MCAS test was a slight dip in student growth percentile in the composite performance index for high school yellow and math, although really being over 91 percent and at 97.3 percent CPI is quite impressive, which still keeps us as a Level One district. So I really can say that's a slip. My areas of focus and I think areas to really hone in on immediately is to strengthen our science curriculum instructional expectations in all grades. And you know with our new schedule K to four, we're already doing that and looking at new materials and have implemented new materials grades three through five. We're working, I'm working very closely with Principal McGinnis to further monitor our fifth grade curriculum alignment. This is an area of concern, just out of this year's assessment that I'm honing in on. And that is the attention to the rigor reflecting the 2010 Massachusetts grade multiple of the LA math. We want to use our Ryan Title I reservation funds immediately to provide some additional after-school supports for the students as soon as we know who they are that struggled on the Park exam, because we want to immediately focus some interventions for those students. And we're gonna continue to support an inclusionary model where all students are exposed to grade level instruction and grade level standards and implement instructional strategies for those students that make those expectations accessible. We'd like to continue to develop our teacher resource bank of good instructional tools. I talked a little bit about that at our last meeting. There are great instructional tools out there. And now that we have a direction, which I'll talk about a little bit later in the meeting, as to where the state is going in assessment, we really need to utilize and show our teachers how to utilize all of those great tools. how to utilize all of those great tools out there, including the PARK and MCAS integration tools that we started to use. So I'm, I welcome any questions. Again, it's not so much an analysis right now, but a snapshot of all of the data compiled. Where do we go? And I have to say, very, very pleased with the performance of our teachers and students.
If you don't mind, I'd like to add, there's a, a very simple way of looking at this first chart, and I want to show you this. If, if you look on the left-hand side of the chart, you have the, the subject area, then you have the pink column where it says PARK, level four and five, district, and then you have PARK state data. And then you have that plus minus difference column. Now look over to the chart on the right-hand side. Again, you have the pink and the blue in the difference column. During my time in Tewksbury, every year when we do our analysis, I say to you, our data is at or slightly above state average. And if you look at the, the differences between our data and the state, you'll see we're two, three, four, five, seven, nine points above the state. We've been pretty consistent over the last four or five years at either being at and above or slightly above the state average. If you look at the PARK data, we're not just above in many areas, we are significantly above grade, the, the state average. And by significant, anything with a plus five and above can be viewed as significantly above the state average. And you look at everything from a high of thirty-eight points in algebra class, Algebra One, to double digits right across most of the areas. That's something we should be very proud of. If that is a, a gain over the state, now remember, not everybody in the state took the test. Only about fifty-five...
Sixty, a high of fifty percent, fifty-eight, I think it was.
Took the test. It'll be interesting to see in a couple of years, when the new test is online, and where we're looking. We want to see, we want to try to, to match these gains moving forward. So people in Tewksbury should be, from our tech, our staff, our students, parents, should be thrilled, with the exception of grade five, which we, I don't get, none of us really get, but that, we, we should be pleased with these results.
Thank you, Dr. O'Connor. Are there any questions, your comments from anyone regarding the results, preliminary results?
Quick question on the area of our ballot, and all of us just making fire.
Oh, no, not all of us did. I, I'm not going to remember all that did.
Yeah.
But I can tell you that not all shot of the score.
Yeah.
Yeah, remember that there was a, you know, it wasn't quite fifty-fifty, maybe sixty-forty versus the traditional MCAS test. Next question.
You're welcome, Mr. Dick and Mr. Cutlass.
No, sir. Just as Dr. O'Connor said, they're substantially higher in almost every grade, which is great to see, and for a test that's supposedly a much tougher exam, right?
It is a tougher exam. And I, again, I have to say, I thank the teachers, the seriousness of purpose around instruction and, you know, standards-based aligned instruction, and then that formative assessment piece, and families and students, you know, really taking serious what we do here at school, it really just pays off.
Yeah, that's good. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cutlass. Mr. Francis?
Thank you. And I, and I think when we had this conversation last year when we voted on bringing the PARK in, we talked about how first-year test scores would have the tendency to really dip in the first year of a test, and then this is just tremendous results, and it's a lot of hard work that everybody put into it. And I think it's something, as Dr. O'Connor said, to be very proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Francis.
Okay.
And then, Mrs. Regan, can you talk a little bit about, how many years is it that we're going to be held homeless now? Because I, part of the, do you want to talk about that now? Is it in the business? Oh, okay, then we can wait. No, I'm sorry, we can wait for that. Okay, that's fine. All right, thank you very much. Okay, moving right along to citizens forums. Dr. O'Connor, do we have anyone registered to speak this evening?
No, we don't.
Is there anyone out in the audience this evening that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none? Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to our clerk, Mr. Cutlass, to present our meeting minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll move the minutes, the regular minute, regular meeting minutes for November fourth, two thousand and fifteen.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to approve the minutes for the November fourth, two thousand and fifteen, regular scheduled meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well.
I'll move the executive session minutes for the November fourth, two thousand and fifteen meeting.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to approve the November fourth, two thousand and fifteen, executive session minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Okay, and then I'm going to turn it right over to our clerk, Mr. Cutlass, to present our payroll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move the payroll for the period ending November five, two thousand and fifteen, the amount of one million, one hundred eighty-four thousand, five hundred sixty-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Second.
So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to approve the payroll period ending November fifth, two thousand and fifteen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Thank you, Mr. Cutlass. Okay, moving right to the consent agenda, does anyone wish to take anything off the table this evening? Okay, not seeing anything. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Second. So I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, to approve the consent agenda this evening. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Thank you. Dr. O'Connor, may we have the superintendent and staff reports this evening?
Thank you. I'd like to extend an invitation to members of the committee to attend the Tewksbury Memorial High School pep rally on November twenty-fourth at approximately nine thirty a.m. The pep rally is trying to get kids geared up for the Thanksgiving Day football game, which takes place, of course, here on November twenty-sixth. It is a home game at ten a.m. Tickets are available, tickets will be sold this week and into next week at the schools. I do have lots of tickets that are available. I wanted to report, and I'm very excited about this, the Patriot Pen Essay Competition to grade six through eight, that former Veterans Affair agent Jimmy Williams was here to talk about. He had over eighty applica, eighty essays submitted. Mr. Williams called our office, he was ecstatic that we had this many from Tewksbury, so very excited for that. Just a reminder, Friday night is the auction. There is a tremendous amount of merchandise that are up for grabs. Bring your wallet, credit card, cash, we, we accept all three. In fact, we might even take personal checks at the, at the auction. This is a, a great community event. It is a lot of fun. People have a great time socializing, getting into that competitive spirit on a number of these silent auctions. It, it is a lot of fun, so we hope we will see people there. And coming up later on, and I can't remember the exact date, Mrs. Bennett, the Ed Foundation Barnes and Nobles?
December fifth.
December fifth. That is an all-day event at Barnes and Nobles. If you are thinking of purchasing any books, whether they be cookbooks, electronic books, kids' books, history books, go to Barnes and Nobles that day, mention you're from Tewksbury, and the Education Foundation, will we see a percentage out from that sale. There also will be gift wrapping available for a small fee, a donation. We'll have students, faculty members, administrative staff, there will be a lot of people at roaming around Barnes and Nobles that day promoting the Ed Foundation, as well as all the great things that are happening in Tewksbury.
Which one? What?
Burlington.
It's in Burlington, I'm sorry. Yes, it's the Burlington Barnes and Noble store. You noticed on the consent agenda, there's a request for a raffle. Unfortunately, it did not get in on time, which has been part of the problem. But this was from the adaptive ski team. I can't imagine that you would be upset with me when I tell you that I could give the permission to start the raffle without your approval. But they are, they were here last week, and you know that this is a great group of students, and we're very excited that they're raffling off Boston Celtics tickets in support of their ski program. I wanted to also let you know that NESDEC, the Special Education Review Process began today. Dr. Michael Palladino and Dr. Carolyn Burke, two representatives from NESDEC, met with the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and special ed director for close to an hour this morning. That was followed by meetings that were held with case managers, school psychologists, principals, administrative assistants, and a small number of teachers. They will be back for second round of interviews on December seventh, and then plan a site visit where they will identify classrooms and schools that they will visit throughout the day. We're also working at a parent survey that hopefully will have, ready to go within the next couple of weeks, and we would like to get out to our parents, particularly those parents who have children with special needs or, or students who are on IDVs. So that will be coming up, and we'll make sure we let people know in advance that that survey is coming. I have some bad news to report here from Tewksbury Memorial High School. We're running out of parking spaces. I can tell you, this is, this is an issue that I'm sure you are going to hear about. Although we do have more parking than we've ever had, we also have more students driving than we've, we've ever had before. It's a combination of, I believe, the economy. More kids are able to afford cars, parents are able to afford a second or a third car in a family. We have a higher enrollment here at the school, and I think that has contributed to the number of students requesting passes. If you recall, this happened last year, but it was not until April or May, as many of those sophomores was picking up their license, that there was no room for parking. This is happening very early. We've allocated over two hundred spaces right now. At the December meeting, I'm going to give you a more detailed explanation, because I am certain you are going to hear from parents about this. I know our principal has heard from a number of parents, and they were not necessarily accepting the per explanation. Also, keep in mind, we did lower the fee by twenty-five percent, and that contributed to, to an increase. So I'm going to provide to you some data next meeting regarding the number of spaces, the number assigned to handicap, the number assigned to visitors, the number assigned to faculty, and then the number that are being assigned to students. I'll have that information for you. Tomorrow, I will be attending the Valley Collaborative Annual Board Meeting, I shouldn't say annual, monthly board meeting. That's tomorrow morning. I also will do a follow-up on the checks that will be issued to the town of Tewksbury for, who reimbursed to us, that we accepted at the last meeting, to make sure that those checks are delivered hopefully before the end of the calendar year. The Tewksbury Special Education Backed Executive Committee meeting will take place this Friday, November twentieth, I believe it's at eight forty-five a.m. in my office. Career Day at Tewksbury Memorial High School is on next Tuesday, the twenty-fourth. I understand there are a large number of people who are participating, community members, parents who are participating in the Career Day. Always very exciting to see our, our students engaged with doctors, police officers, scientists, engineers, teachers, and a variety of other professions. Reminder to parents, we are looking at a two-and-a-half-day work week next week and a two-and-a-half-day student week. Classes will be dismissed halfway through Wednesday, to make everybody aware of that. We continue to conduct drills and awareness training involving the Atlas protocols, the middle school, the, the Ryan, and the elementary schools have been engaging in this practice. And then finally, I'd like to reach out to Eric Clifford. He's the dad that approached us last meeting regarding the transportation issue. We've attempted to contact Mr. Clifford via email and telephone. We've not heard back from him. We would like him to get in touch with Mr. Dave Libby, so Dave can sit down and go over his findings regarding Mr. Clifford's request for transportation down to Portles Drive. That's all I have.
One second. Does anyone have any questions or comments on anything that Dr. O'Connor said? I just had one question, and it was back to the special ed audit, Dr. O'Connor. So you said the first round of interviews were conducted today, the second round is going to be December seventh. Are we interviewing parents at all, or is it strictly just staff?
At the present time, this, today was all staff. There will be parents involved in the next go-around.
Okay.
He's given us a list of categories he wants to meet, regular classroom teachers, special education teachers, some parents, and a variety of other...
Site observations.
And they're going to be doing site observations on the ninth as well. So we'll be putting that list together.
Okay, thanks for that clarification.
Yep.
Agree news to share. I think two meetings ago, I reported that we still had two coordinated program review English language education criteria to satisfy the state that we were in compliance with the expectations around English language education. Today, on the press, I got the report that they've approved our two corrective action pieces, and one was ELE standard five, which was increasing the service minutes so that we were in compliance of the recommended service minutes for all of our English language learners. We, thankfully, with your approval of hiring Kathy Henry now at a full-time position, so we have two full-time ELE teachers, and then hiring two part-time teachers to stay at our, two of our schools, one at the Doing and one at the Win, we now are able to just make the service requirements minutes for every one of our ELL students. So proud to tell you that. As well as, they approved our corrective action in regards to our program review, which was really focused on the amount of minutes we needed to bring in those part-time people. So we are in full compliance now when it comes to our coordinated program review of English language education. And then, second, just in, you know, to enhance Dr. O'Connor's report on our Atlas training, I hope you saw on the consent agenda, we've implemented a new drill and emergency report form for all schools to keep track of when they do their, any drill or any type of emergency, and then to also send copies of those reports to the districts, so we're also well aware of when different types of emergency drill practices are taking place. So it's, it's sort of a report form, as well as some notes and comments for improvement and what we saw that went really well when we were there.
Thank you, Mrs. Regan.
I have two quick things. One is just a follow-up. I, I am meeting tomorrow with Rick Pelletier, Cheryl Crum, and Dave Libby. We're going over everything, special education expenses. So on December ninth, I'll be prepared to kind of update the committee on where we stand with our expenses, and we'll be able to also update the finance committee and the town manager. And second, last week, Dr. O'Connor, John Ma, Shannon, and I, we met with Combustion Services to go over some HVAC heating issues we're having at the Doing School and the Wall Street School. They put together a statement of these issues that they believe need to be addressed, and Dr. O'Connor did contact MSBA on Monday morning, and we forwarded that document to them to kind of update our file on our statement of interest. I have spoken to the town manager, and we have contacted a heating engineer that will be going into the Doing School to look at the whole heating system.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Matthews.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Dick.
Follow-up on the high school network, how that was resolved, or I thought we do is a presentation and...
Yep.
We believe that everything is working exceptionally well right now. I believe one of the, the major changes that occurred is all of the students had, we've migrated all of the students' access to the internet to their own separate server, which is not blocking down the rest of the, the system, teachers, visitors, and so forth. And that seems to be working well.
And we've also upgraded to BIOS, so we have five hundred megabits per second.
Versus what were we?
One fifty.
We were at one fifty twenty-five, one fifty and twenty-five, and now we're at five point five. So there's a difference.
Yeah, I haven't heard much, so I guess that...
Good to know, Mrs. Regan.
So thank you very much.
Yeah, we're hoping that it works well. And again, you know, six months ago, we spent several thousand dollars and brought an outside consultant, a, a technology firm in here, who looked at our system and reported back to us that we have a robust, up-to-date system for what we're doing here in high school. So we were, we were very troubled by the issues that were arising on a day-to-day basis here, and it took us a while to figure out what we need to do to, to make sure that the system was running seamlessly.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Dick. Okay, we'll move it over to committee reports. Is there any update on the high school building committee?
Nothing to report tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Francis and Mr. Cutlass. The Tewksbury Education Foundation, I think Dr. O'Connor did a great job tonight. I just want to say, remind everybody, this is your opportunity to come out and have a great night and support our schools. Tickets are available at the door. You can probably still get tickets from... You can probably still get tickets from any of the school community members or people on the board, but feel free to walk right in that night. Tickets are always available and don't miss a great opportunity and a fun night to support our schools. The Tewksbury Special Education Pack Executive Meeting, Dr. O'Connor alluded to, we have a meeting this Friday morning at 8:45 in Dr. O'Connor's office. I reached out to Mrs. Coleman. At this point, she had no update for this evening, so we'll certainly have more information to share after our executive meeting on Friday. And then, Mrs. Miller, an update on the wellness?
Thank you. I gave a long, lengthy update last time and I won't take up much time tonight, just to let you know that we have our first newsletter will be coming out, which will be representing events and information from across the town and the school district. So, should be exciting and Deborah Mugford is working on that in our food service department, so you should see that soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Okay, moving right over, Mr. Dick, may we have the policies this evening?
Madam Chair, tonight's policies, changes, proposal, and options. We have first reading for some revisions. EBV-E-Accident Illness Notification Form, ECE-R. Tewksbury Memorial High School Parking Privileges, EEAC, Student Conduct in School Buses, EEF, Use of Video Cameras on School Buses, EFD, Payment for Food Services. We all, and then this next section, we have some policies to rescind. Changes in federal state law, rendered policies obsolete, doubt, or should be replaced. All policies that may no longer be relevant. This is our first reading. EBCA Crisis Team Procedures, EBCC Responding to Bomb Threats, EBCE, Tewksbury Fire Police Notification Card, EBCC-R Administrative Procedures, Bomb Threats and Other Incidents, EEAC-R, Student Conduct on School Buses, and then the last one, FB-Facilities Planning. If you have any questions or want to discuss those, please see Mrs. Palamino or Dr. O'Connor.
Okay, Mr. Francis?
I have a question, not on that, but I have a question on policy. I received a call from a parent and I'm not exactly sure what the answer to this question is. As we approve trips in advance overseas, we always say, it's always under the auspices that at any time, we can rescind that trip. My question is, is there parent protection on these trips in terms of if, to world events that if we decide as a committee that, you know, a trip isn't going to happen? Do they have protection on what they pay?
We require the insurance.
Yes.
It's required that they have to pay?
I remember that was a discussion my first year here. We had a trip that may not have had that insurance and we required to get it and then go forward.
Okay, so there is, there is that protection?
It's a requirement of all national, all riding trips, but that matters.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dick. Thank you, Mr. Francis. Okay, moving right on to old business. The first item is the superintendent search advisory committee announcement. I'd like to just provide everyone an update this evening of where we are in the superintendent search. And for the presence here this evening, I have this written out, so I'd be more than happy to hand this to you at the end of the meeting. Here is a status update on the search for the next superintendent of the Tewksbury Public Schools. During the school committee meeting on August 19th, 2015, we interviewed both the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and the New England School Development Council Organization in order to gauge their ability to help us in a consulting capacity in the search. That evening, we selected the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and consultant Mike Gilbert, failed director, has been working with us ever since, conducting focus groups, surveying our community, and providing us with expectations around process and timelines. At the October 14th, 2015, school committee meeting, we voted on the selection criteria, community profile, brochure, and advertisement. The formal job ad for this position was posted on October 21st, 2015. The closing date of the application process is November 24th, 2015. A formal superintendent search committee was also voted on and established at the October 14th, 2015, school committee meeting. The committee is comprised of 15 individuals representing various groups within the Tewksbury community. The composition of this committee is as follows. Four parents, four teachers, one principal, two central office administrators/staff, two town residents, one current Tewksbury Memorial High School student, and one current Tewksbury School Committee member. Chrissy Palamino was voted to serve as the school committee representative. Many names were submitted and solicited to fill the other various groups. Mrs. Palamino, chairperson, and Mr. Francis, vice-chairperson, reviewed the applicants for the parents and the community at large members and selected those individuals. Letters were sent out to all the committee applicants in the process, both those that were selected and those that were not. The following list represents the individuals selected to the superintendent search committee. Marco Basari, Artie Bennett, Shannon Demos, Kelsey Dunn, Teresa Inos, Shannon Kaiser, Jennifer Morowski, Rick Pelletier, Kaysha Perez, Kristen Palamino, Brenda Regan, Joseph Smith, Stephen Trudeau, Kristen Vogel, and Robert Wells. The first full superintendent search committee meeting will be on December 7th, 2015, at Tewksbury Memorial High School from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., where Mike Gilbert from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees will conduct a training session with the members of the committee in preparation of the upcoming interviews that will take place from December 14th, 2015, to December 17th, 2015. The hope is to have three to five superintendent finalists presented to the school committee at a special meeting on December 21st, 2015, at 6:00 p.m. At this time, candidates will be formally presented and our consultant, Mike Gilbert, will be reviewing the next steps for the school committee. The school committee will ultimately vote to make the final decision on our next superintendent. So I'd just like to say congratulations to all those people that were selected to be on the search committee and would also like to thank all those people that were interested and we look forward to getting this important work done to pick our next superintendent of schools.
I have a comment.
Okay, Mrs. Miller?
Thank you. First, I wanted to know if Mr. Dick or Mr. Cutlass were aware that the chair and the vice-chair would be selecting all the names from the applicants? Were you aware that that would be happening?
I assume that was the case.
And when were you made aware?
We were made aware within the meetings. I mean, we, there was total transparency with Mr. Gilbert, right out of the gate. We all weighed in on the whole process and very confident in the selection process and moving forward. So I had no, no problem. I had ample opportunity to reach out to the chair and the vice-chair on candidates and anybody that applied. I had people contact me directly. I forwarded their names to the chair and the vice-chair. So I'm, I'm very confident in the process and pleased with the demographic that we have selected, so.
I am as well. I thought Mr. Gilbert came in as a consultant, worked with the chair and the vice-chair, and I had full confidence in them that they would make the best decisions and based on, I don't know all the people that were selected, but based on a lot of the names that I heard, I'm very happy to hear that. But I think we have a great superintendent search committee and I'm very happy with the process so far.
Well, I'm disappointed in the process and I have a statement to read. Today, I received the list of parents like the rest of the committee did, the residents, teachers, administrators, and staff appointed to fill the seats on the superintendent search committee. Monday, however, people chosen to serve on that committee began receiving notifications and posting them on social media sites where I first learned of it. I was incredulous. I'm not understanding how anyone could be appointed to that committee when this committee had not seen the list of applicants, let alone deliberate and vote in open session. I did call the chairperson and learned that she and Mr. Francis had together selected the list themselves. I also understand somewhat anecdotally that the chair invited applicants to apply for this search committee and to fill some of the criteria that the board, that this board required, but that others who had applied were passed over. Some who dedicate themselves, some of the people who were passed over were folks that dedicate countless hours to our schools and our families and frankly, this benefit, would benefit this committee tremendously. Let me also be very clear. I agree there are a number of excellent people that Mrs. Palamino and Mr. Francis have chosen to be on this committee. This is not about those individuals or personality. I think all of the people that I know that were appointed to it would be an asset to this committee and this search. My problem is with the way that the chair and the vice-chair conducted themselves in the course of appointing these members. There was no vote to give authority to remove the votes of the members of this committee, certainly not without a vote of this committee. We'd never voted to give that authority to these two people. Our appointment of the chair to serve as a member of this committee was just that, to serve on that committee, not to handpick the members behind closed doors. To me, it leaves a stench of impropriety. In order to maintain public confidence in this process, arguably among the most important roles this committee holds statutorily, these appointments should have been made in the open, in public, just as they were done during the last superintendent search conducted by this committee, on which both the vice-chair and I served. I've done this before and I'm saddened at what I feel is the disrespect shown to the members of this committee and the community we all serve. No vote by this committee authorized the chair and the vice-chair to go off and independently decide outside of an open meeting who gets on the committee and who doesn't. This self-appointed and unauthorized subcommittee usurped the authority of this committee and undermined the process. The hubris of these actions is absolutely breathtaking, especially from a group that publicly accused the Board of Selectmen just six months ago of rigging their appointment to an open seat, my seat, a process that was conducted entirely in the public eye. I believe that this search committee, as appointed, should be dissolved and the school committee, all five of us, should receive the full list of applicant names and materials, interview the applicants briefly in open session, and then appoint a new committee at the next possible date. I believe the committee should consider appointing a new member or none at all to serve on this search committee. I do believe both the chair and the vice-chair meant well, meant to read through all the materials and pick the people they thought were best for the job. They chose many good people and reappointing this committee in the open may not change one person who serves, who eventually serves. But it is the right of the members here to vote. We are required to conduct our business in the open and it is incumbent upon us to honor our own policy and practice by working hard to keep everything absolutely transparent. If this committee does not choose to conduct these appointments in open session, in order to protect the public confidence in this work, I do intend to file a complaint with the town clerk to review the actions taken by this committee's leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Would you like to make a motion?
I would make a motion. I will make that in the form of a motion that this committee consider dissolving the committee that was appointed and reappointing based on the list of applicants that the chair and the vice-chair have looked at.
Do I have a second?
I'd like, I'd like to just make a comment.
Yes, Mr. Dick.
Before the vote, that, you know, I totally disagree with your statement. I'm very offended at some of the accusations in that statement to these people that are sitting up here. And I don't understand your intentions, but there was nothing wrong with the selection process as you have, as you have read and prepared your statement. You know, there might be, maybe there was a candidate that you wanted to see on that committee that you're a little disgruntled that that, that person didn't get on, but...
No, not at all.
I continue to be disappointed in some of the things that you're saying on this committee. This one is way out of line and I just don't appreciate it, Mrs. Miller. And I'm offended and I totally am supportive in the way the process went. I appreciate Mrs. Palamino and Mr. Francis' effort. I had 100%, I have 100% confidence in that decision. I think we have a great, strong team and you agree on that.
Yeah, totally agree.
But, you know, Mr. Gilbert had no problem with the process. We have had many meetings where he's come before us and there was no decision other than the way the process went and you agreed to it.
I disagree with that. I would disagree.
You definitely make that point. So I just want to, for the record, I strongly disagree with your statement and very offended at the comments that you made and the accusations in the statement that you made. And I think it's horrendous, to be honest with you, and I'm very, very disappointed.
Likewise.
Yeah.
Mister.
So, Madam Chair, I think I just wanted to make that, make that statement before the vote.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dick. Is there a second on the floor?
I'm not going to second it. I'd like to comment as well.
Okay, Mr. Cutlass?
Thank you. And I, I agree with Mr. Dick 100%. Mr. Miller, I think you're totally out of line with this. In fact, I could be wrong because I don't have the rules and regulations right in front of me, but I believe the chair of the committee has absolute power to appoint anyone she wants to, any committee that she wants to, no matter what it is. And we've had a number of committees. We have, constantly have committees to elect, to pick principals, to pick vice principals, to pick assistant superintendents, and this is the same way we do it every time. And it's open and it's fair and it's transparent. And I think we did it 100% right and we brought in Mr. Gilbert, who's the state head of all the superintendents to advise us every step of the way. And he did that and we followed his recommendation every step of the way. So I think your statement here is totally out of line and without any merit of basis. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Cutlass. Mrs. Miller, I would just like to address it in saying that we have followed the procedures set by Mr. Gilbert, our consultant, that we all voted on and hired. We've gone through the process. He's walked us through this. This was, things that we've talked to him about. We were, I said at the last school committee, we were going to present the selection of the school committee and that's in fact what we did here this evening. I value your opinion and I'm sorry that you feel the way that you feel, but we are following the policy. This is the way many districts have done it. This is what our consultant has recommended. Mr. Francis and I took the time, went through the process as described above, and we came up with the candidates for this evening. So the motion does fail since it wasn't seconded.
Correct.
This evening. And I think we're going to move on. We have our candidates, we have our meeting set up, and we're going to proceed and our goal for all of us, and I want to let this be known, everyone at this table that's sitting here, all five of us, have the best interest of this district and the students. And I don't want that to be overshadowed. And I think that we need to remember that our goal here is to find the next superintendent that's going to lead our district and we're going to follow this process and we're going to take our lead from our consultant, Mr. Gilbert. And I feel, I feel very confident in the way we've handled things as we move forward. Mr. Francis?
Yeah, I'd just like to make, just a statement. I support our chairman 100% behind this. As Mr. Cutlass says, in the past, whenever we had committees, it's always the chair can appoint to these committees. And I'm kind of, kind of offended myself for the chairperson who actually busts, works hard, works hard in doing the right thing and always caring about the students here and I support her 100%. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Okay, moving right along to number two, the budget process. Mrs. Matthews?
I just wanted to officially put in writing what I discussed with you at the last meeting. It's a proposed timeline for our budget. I don't know if this needs a vote?
No, it does not. We've added it to the calendar, so your updated school committee calendar has these dates on. And the only thing I would add to this is there may be additional dates that we might add depending upon how the budget process goes over the next several months.
Yeah, we met the other day at administrative council. We briefly talked about it. All seven principals were sent budget sheets today with updated FY '15, total expended FY '16 budgeted, so they have to kind of fill in the FY '17. I have offered to meet individually with them if they had any questions or concerns.
Does anyone have any questions or comments for Mrs. Matthews this evening? Mrs. Matthews, so January 27th seems pretty aggressive, but you feel confident that you will have the flimery budget all completed by them, so we'll be ready for our workshop where we engage our community?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll give you a budget presentation. There we are.
All right, wonderful, thank you. Okay, moving right along to new business.
You have an extensive package in your paperwork here from Mitchell Chester, the education commissioner regarding his recommendation on student assessments for spring 2016 and beyond. We do not need to spend a lot of time on this. It has been front page of the paper all this week as the Board of Education, the state, voted to approve the commissioner's recommendation, I believe it was an eight to three vote. There will be numerous press releases and information coming to school districts over the next couple of months about the upcoming spring test and the test going further on this. You did notice that he is recommending what is called MCAS II.
Next generation.
Sort of a next generation MCAS, excuse me, next generation MCAS. We're not sure what it's going to look like. We suspect there's going to be elements of PAR, elements of MCAS that will be out of the test. Do you want to give a little quick summary?
Yeah, as Dr. O'Connor said, at any, we vote, the Board of Education and otherwise known as PESI, agreed to transition to a next generation MCAS and that's the terminology they're using, using both PAR. Using, using both PAR items, PAR questions, as well as best of MCAS will stay, I guess, on the all-star team with test questions for us. In summary, what does it really mean? That the state is looking to award a new next generation MCAS contract to include PAR items specific to Massachusetts standards, our standards, which incorporates the common core. The commitment is to have a computer-based test for all those in Massachusetts by 2019. We will remain a member of the PAR consortium. The Department of Education will convene a team of mass educators, grades K through 12, as well as higher ed, to advise the department through the transition. Any district that administers PAR, any, that includes us, we will, Tewksbury will administer PAR this spring for grades three through eight. The nine through 12 will not, I mean, the nine and 11 test will not happen, we'll talk about that in a minute, but any district, including those that administered PAR last year and those who want to administer the PAR test this year, will be held harmless if they are negatively impacted in the transition of a new assessment. And then, any district, all district, I should say any, all districts will be held harmless to negative impacts when the new assessment is transitioned in next spring in 2017. Tewksbury will take the grade three through eight PAR test this spring for ELA and MAF. We will continue with the MCAS test for science, technology and education, grades five, eight and nine. And then, of course, our competency determination will still be grade 10, ELA and MAF for graduation, grades 10 at this time. Grade nine and 11, next generation MCAS is still under development and will take a more priority seat after 2017 spring transition for next generation MCAS. So, at this time, I'd just like to say from an instructional perspective, I'm really glad that this ongoing question and sort of unknown has finally been answered. We can continue supporting best instruction in the class for our students as we have the door. So, on the press release that went out by the commissioner, I think it's important to note that Massachusetts has just completed a unique two-year tryout, and this is from the Board of Education as well, of PAR, the Partnership for the Assessment of Readiness for College and Career. It's an assessment developed by a consortium of states which Massachusetts is a founding member of. The Commonwealth's participation allowed Massachusetts to pool its expertise with other states, sharing the cost of test development and realize the economies of scale in test administration. So, we move on.
Thank you, Mrs. Regan. Okay, moving right along to school committee matters of interest. Mr. Dick, do you have anything this evening?
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cutlass?
No, I'll say, thank you, Mr. Dick.
Mr. Francis?
Yeah, the only thing I have to mention is, I know that committee members attended the Veterans Day at, at the high school last week and it was just tremendous that the attention that the students had. One side of the, of the gym, the seniors were all dressed in black for all the, all the veterans who were killed in action and on the other side, all the students were dressed in red, white and blue. And their attention and their respect for all the veterans that were there that day was great. It was great, it was a great day, put together by the, by the staff and the administration of the school and I was proud to be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Mrs. Miller?
Nothing further.
Thank you. And the chair has nothing this evening as well. Future school committee meetings. Mrs. Johnson, could you just please make a note that we'll be adding a December 21st, 2015, special school committee meeting at 6:00 PM right here in the library regarding the superintendent's search. This is the date that Mr. Gilbert, our field consultant, will be presenting the finalists to the school committee and giving the school committee next steps as far as how we'll do site visits and at that point, that's when they will be, after they present it, that committee will be discharged and then it will become the role of the school committee to take it from there. Thank you. And our next scheduled meeting is December 9th, 2015. For those people that may have marked their calendars early, this was a switch because of the interview schedule, we did move from the 16th to the 9th, so the next scheduled meeting is December 9th. And then, for future agenda items, we will be recognizing our John and Abigail Adams scholarship recipients, as well as Tewksbury's top students with the perfect MCAS scores. We'll have a financial report update, grant update and substitute pay update. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make that a motion.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second on the floor to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes on you as well. We'll see everybody on the 9th. Thank you.